Good Monday afternoon, guys. My name is Jerry Miller and welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. We're live in Charlottesville, the Commonwealth of the country and the world. We're presented by Ting Fiber Internet, crazy fast internet. We're live on every social media platform humanly possible and we're grateful for you joining us here on the I Love Seaville Network. Judah Whitkower is our director. Judah, if we can go to the studio camera and we'll welcome Counselor Lloyd Snook to the show. Was your Valentine's Day good?
Very good.
Good? Yeah. Did you guys do anything, anything cool?
Uh, no, stayed home. I made sort of a special dinner. I'm the cook in the family.
Okay.
Made a special dinner and things were very good.
I was impressed with the photo you took. I think it was after the first snowfall, maybe the second, and you posted on your Facebook page of, was it the church down here? The church at UVA covered in snow?
Right, it was St. Paul's Church, the church I'd go to. And I had been here at the office till about 3:00 in the morning and drove home by some areas that I thought would be pretty scenic and that was one of them.
He is a night owl. Alright, we'll talk shop here. I have promised him and I'm going to keep my word that we're going to talk primarily about the West Main streetscape and about the Market Street parking garage. I think those two topics are, should be more on our radar. The one topic that is probably consuming the new cycle the most is the mayor and the credit card usage. We'll have one question on this and then one question holistically on the policy and perhaps what changes need to happen. So here, I was thinking about this and I wanted to be fair. So when thinking about the one question I would ask, I saw that you posted on our common friend Matthew Gillikin's Facebook page. And basically, and what you posted, I frankly agreed with, was the mayor is making a number of arguments simultaneously and you outlined those arguments. And then you closed with this, "The city attorney's memo was not a threat of criminal prosecution. In fact, the Commonwealth attorney stated that the credit card misuse cannot be prosecuted under our flawed credit card policy. It was an attempt to call to council's attention that money was being spent without legal authorization and in violation of state law and a reminder that we needed to fix our credit card policy." So I wanted to be fair. The first question I'm going to ask is, why'd you feel compelled to post this? And then the second question I'm going to ask is, clearly to me, and I'm no expert, the policy needs a complete revamp.
Yeah. And let me just ask for the purposes of your broadcast, through this mask, am I intelligible?
Jay Dobbs, to be straightforward, it would be easier if you didn't have it on. We are eight feet away. For those that are asking, this is eight feet distance here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so first question, why I felt I needed to post what I posted as a response to what Matthew Gillikin had wrote, had written. Basically, it's important to me that people understand, first of all, that counselors regard themselves as subject to the law. We are not above the law. We are not trying to circumvent the law. Mayor Walker's responses were in many instances, something along the lines of, "Nobody had told me that's the way I'd been doing it all along." And partly what I wanted to get across to folks was that this was not going to be a situation where council was just going to sort of push it under the rug and ignore it. On the other hand, I also wanted people to understand, this is not a criminal case. This is simply a matter of, there are some very obscure rules of state contracting practice, one of which is that you're not supposed to give gift cards or something like that. But there is a second broader question, and this gets to the second question that you're asking, a broader policy question for the city. When I came on to city council a year ago, of course, there had been a lot of discussion of counselors' credit card usage over the prior year or so. And I wanted to talk about that as a, as a practice. And just for the record, I don't have a city credit card. I don't have a city cellphone.
Neither does Heather. Heather does not have a city credit card.
I don't have a city cellphone. I don't have a city computer. So, and I've always operated the way I've operated my business, which is, if I want to get reimbursed for something, I turn in the receipt with an explanation and hopefully it gets reimbursed. And my bookkeeper is pretty tough on me. So, and that's the way it ought to be. So, that's, the policy is, I think we have to look at whether counselors ought to have credit cards, at whether counselors ought to have credit cards with a credit limit of $20,000, which is the credit limit on Mayor Walker's credit card. The credit card limit on, I think Michael Payne and Sina McGill each have credit cards that they don't use very often, if at all, that have a much lower credit limit. There's some legitimate reasons to have a city credit card for, even for city counselors, but they need to be controlled. And so the question was, should we have, should we revisit the policy? We had been told in May, in May of 18, there was a policy that was enunciated in the fall of 2018, when there was an issue over the former clerk of council and her use of credit cards. Joe Platania told the city, "Your policy is too vague. It needs to be cleared up and cleaned up before anybody could prosecute it." So I said back in January of 2020, "Let's go ahead and clean it up." For lack of, for whatever reason, it just didn't happen. And I'm not going to try to figure out exactly why, but it didn't. So we've got this credit card policy issue that's on the agenda for tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, yeah.
And I'm not quite sure where that's going to go. I'm not quite sure how the discussion is going to go. I, my overall view, I want to look forward. I'm less concerned about looking backward, though clearly it's appropriate. Somebody has to look backward. I just don't want to spend my time on it.
Understood.
So I want to look forward. I want to get a policy that makes sense and then, and then move on from there. And as I said to you, when you asked me about coming on the show today, I said, "We've got decisions that are going to be happening Tuesday night over millions of dollars."
West Main streetscape.
I want to talk about millions, not hundreds.
Okay, respect. Alright, so that's, I'll put it behind us then. So what do you think, dot the i's and cross the t's, Tuesday on the agenda, what could happen? What, what, as taxpayers and voters, what do we think is going to happen on Tuesday with that on the agenda?
Well, Mayor Walker wants to discuss the issue. I don't know exactly what angle she wants to take. Of course, this came to our attention in a memo that was sent by the city attorney to all of the counselors, saying, "Here is a problem." She didn't identify who the counselor was. Mayor Walker self-identified. And what, what the overall intent of the memo was, was to say, "You all need to get your house in order," which is something that I think we all agree on. How we do that, well, first of all, we need to get a policy that is sufficiently clear that we can know, you know, if somebody seriously is abusing the policy, they could be prosecuted. Not because I'm a great fan of criminal prosecutions, but just if we've got that level of clarity, that's a step in the right direction. There is a draft policy that was formulated last year. I don't know whether we're, we're certainly not going to be adopting that tomorrow night, but it may serve as a springboard for more discussion. So, and I hope we will also get some clarity, or begin to get some clarity over one of the other issues that was, was raised in Lisa Robertson's memo, which is the circumstances under which individual counselors can spend the city's money at all. And Mayor Walker has said that in some of the, some of the gift cards, for example, that she was giving were to, to basically reward or to thank people for giving their time in participating in a task force that she has put together. Well, you know, problem number one is, the task force isn't a task force of council. There has never been a council vote on that. I don't even know who the members of the task force are. And maybe if we're going to be spending city money, we ought to have a vote on it.
I feel like that's, so we should do.
So, we may get to that point. I don't think we'll get to that point tomorrow night, but that's the, the direction in which a number of us would like the discussion to go.
Okay. And I'm a man of my word. We'll change the topic here.
Okay.
Market Street Garage. So you've been more transparent of late on your social media. You've always been transparent, but your Lloyd Snook for City Councils had more content on it of late. And I was impressed with the perspective you shared on February 10th with graphs on the Market Street parking garage. Perhaps I'll offer a Cliff Notes version. The Market Street parking garage, and it's even tough for me to say this, as a property owner in the Macklin Building, prior to COVID, I, there was undoubtedly a demand for more parking downtown. And that's going to catch me, you know, I'll get heat for that. But I know there was a demand. Now that COVID has happened, that demand has subsided. So the gist of the post on your page, Counselor Snook, was, "Until we truly know what marketplace demand for parking is going to be, we, it would be prudent of us if we did not spend this money on this garage." Is that the gist?
That's the gist. And let me say, I have, going back 10 years to when, back during the time when I was the president of the Local Bar Association, it was important to us to have a commitment to the parking garage because the county felt it was important to them as a condition for them leaving the courts downtown.
Right.
We signed the agreement in 2018, I guess it was, that called for building this additional parking garage, or in the alternative, to give to the county 100 dedicated spaces in the Market Street parking garage that's now there. And so I've, I've been a real adherent, a real fan of adhering to that policy and to that discussion. But we also have to recognize that we have had a cataclysmic shift in our economy in Charlottesville in the last year. And here, I want to show, if we can bring up that graphic that I...
He's got him on screen.
Okay. Looking at the graphic, the two columns on the left, you know, the Water Street's top, Market Street's the bottom. Let's just look at the Market Street in particular. Bottom left corner, what you see is that the number of spaces that's available at any one time, actually, this doesn't show it as clearly as, as the other one on, right next to it, but it shows that the, obviously what we know is that the demand is much, much higher Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And in fact, with the real emphasis being Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I will tell you, if you go to my Facebook page, you'll see the more time-specific graphs.
And that's a city council Facebook page, not the personal page.
Right. Lloyd Snook for City Council. That, there I've posted this same graphic for two different time periods. One is a time period before COVID hit and one is the last three months. And what you see is that the available demand in the Market Street lot before COVID, mid-week, often got down to about 50 spots. And now you see that it's around 300 spots or 400 spots. People, I mean, there's just a huge difference. So what this graphic that's up on screen here is showing is that the available space in the parking garage pre-COVID was averaging about 100 spaces a day during these times. And of course, you've got to keep in mind that it varies during the day as well. So an average over the day is a little bit misleading. And then you see it goes from 75 to 100 available to 400 available. There's no reason for us to be building a parking garage to accommodate 100 spaces if we've got 400 spaces available.
And the cost of the garage in totality is roughly 10, 11?
10, something like, something like that.
10 or 11 million, roughly, roughly.
We've already spent close to 2 million, but yes, another 8 million is what's budgeted. So, we've got this huge, I mean, if you, if you go to the, to the parking garage any weekday nowadays, you will see there's all kinds of room, even on the second level, whereas a year ago, you'd have to go to the fourth level before you'd find a space. So things are clearly different. The question that we don't know the answer to is, what's that going to look like in a year, two years, three years? My guess is, if we, if the economy is restored to a somewhat normal fashion during calendar year 2021, so that say by, by the fall, we're back to, you know, enough people have vaccines that the people are out and about again, I still think it's going to be two or three years beyond that before we know, for example, how many people are now telecommuting where they weren't telecommuting before. State Farm on Pantop's Mountain, they've closed down their in-the-building operation.
Sure.
And they're selling the building so that everybody, because everybody is telecommuting, all of their adjusters are telecommuting and they've perfected the electronic mechanisms and so on. So, is that the future? I think it's part of the future. Is it the whole future? I don't know. We will know.
None of us know.
None of us knows.
Yeah.
And so we'll know in about two or three years, a little bit better. But in the meantime, if we're looking at these kinds of numbers, we're crazy to spend 10 million, $8 million to go add to a parking glut. So that's number one, is we've got that, that change going on. Number two, I've long said that if we only build a three-story parking garage...
It's not a good use of the property.
On prime real estate.
Yeah, that's fair.
That's, that's not a good use of the property. And if we're going to have housing above it, or whatever we're going to do, we've got to do something other than just warehouse cars for, for eight hours a day, which is essentially what it is. So, and we have never really explored those options. And there's some competing white papers and pro formas out there that, you know, for certain projects. I don't know which ones are the right, are, use the right numbers. The one thing I do know is, we don't know. And again, it doesn't make any sense for us to be spending $8 million as we move forward on that.
Everything you said, I think, is reasonable. I'm going to throw the butt, and here's the butt. There's a contractual agreement between the city of Charlottesville and Almar County with a November 30, 2023 deadline for delivering of this garage.
And the agreement, foresight on the part of either the city or the county or both, they built in an out. They built in a, "If you don't do this..."
"We give you this."
"We give you this."
So you're saying...
"We're still complying with the agreement."
So you're saying then, the best solution would be, "We give you this then." And we give you the, the parking spaces in the market garage because the graph justify the spaces there to give?
At least temporarily. You know, the one thing that's not 100% clear in all of this is, if we were to go in the direction of giving them 100 parking spaces, and then, let's say, three or four years from now, we build the garage, can we say, "Okay, now you've got to switch things over"? Or do we just say, "Okay, fine, you're still in the Market Street Garage," which actually, somebody figured out, it's actually about 100 feet closer to...
The courthouse.
To the courthouse than, than where we would be putting them.
How do you sell that to the board of supervisors?
Well, I've talked to a couple of members of the board of supervisors and they all basically say, "Listen, we know what's going on. We, it's not an issue of good faith. Nobody anticipated this pandemic. Nobody anticipated the change in the economy." And I haven't talked to all, all the supervisors, but I know that our staff has talked to their staff and I think that there is broad understanding of why we're doing what we're doing, or why, why we're talking about doing what we're talking about doing, because we haven't done it yet.
Sure.
But the point is, we've been trying, we have been trying to be open with them and candid and not playing hide the ball. And, I mean, there's no way you can hide that ball. It's, it's there.
It's the entry, yeah, it's there. Okay, interesting. So...
And so the effect of this is...
Yeah, there we go.
We pull $8 million out of the capital budget.
And it's allocated to?
The 8 million, and I would propose that we reallocate that 8 million and there's some other savings we could affect in various places, and put that towards the West Main streetscape.
Okay.
And the reason for that is, and I say this, to me, our decision on the West Main streetscape is very similar to the 1974 decision to build the downtown mall.
We should give background on the West Main streetscape. It's a roughly $50 million massive revitalization project on West Main. Is that, is that fair?
It, it will run basically from JPA to the Ridge McIntyre five-way intersection at the top of the hill.
50 million?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay.
Give or take. And it's gone up and down and there's some value engineering things that might not knock 3 million off it, a few things like that. But it's going to be a lot of money. And we've got a fair amount of money. We've got, at this point, about $20 million from other sources. Some of it's state funding. The university has promised to kick in up to $5 million for the portion that is closest to them, because let's face it, the last few blocks there, they're the dominant property owners on both sides of the street. From Stacy Hall on one side to even the, you know, the bank building across the street from them is actually owned by the university.
Sure.
So that's all, pretty much all university property. And it is in their best interest to, to have that all look good, too. Now, so it's not just a question of looking good, though, and that's the important thing. It's not merely cosmetics. This is, in this, in this corridor, we've got 1.6 million, 1.6 million transit trips a year, 1. something or other bike trips, 1. something or other million pedestrian trips. We've got millions of people going back and forth through what is frankly, a sort of an embarrassing...
In its current state.
Landscape, in its current, in its current state.
You can make the argument, it's the most important corridor in the city of Charlottesville.
That's, that's the position that I've taken. It's the most important mile that we've got right now.
Because it connects UVA to Midtown to Downtown.
Right. It connects the two...
Everything.
The two largest economic and cultural centers.
Yeah.
You know, Barracks Road, to a certain extent, is a more important commercial center than the downtown mall. There's a larger business.
But not from a brand identity standpoint.
Right. And so if you're talking about what's iconic Charlottesville...
Yeah, it's this.
You're talking downtown, you're talking the university. And so the connection for tourists, the connection for people who want to live in one place and get to work down at the university, for example, that connection is vital. And so I look at it as, in, you know, 1974, when we decided to do downtown mall, it was really Charles Barber and Mitch Vanieri's, because the other three members of council were conflicted out of the discussion because they either owned property or they were...
Who were they?
Jill Reinhardt, who's, let's see, I think, the deal was, I think her husband was, was an architect and involved in it. They may have owned property. George Gillum, who was on the board of Central Bank, Francis Fife was a banker with the Virginia National at the time.
Okay.
So they were all conflicted out. And it came down to Charles and Mitch. And it was a $4.1 million commitment that we were looking for. And that was, remember, that was 46, 47 years ago. That was when 4.1 million dollars...
It's a lot of money.
Real money.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And they agonized over it and agonized over it. And they finally decided to go ahead and do it. And admittedly, it has taken a lot of money along the way to keep it going. But I think everybody would agree in hindsight, it was the right move.
Definitely.
I think we're at that same position right now with West Main.
Okay.
We have particularly the blocks between 4th and 10th, 9th, somewhere in there. There are a lot of properties there that are kind of iffy in their streetscape. We've got broken sidewalk. We've got narrowed sidewalk in some places. We've got a difficulty of walking. It's in some cases, not really very safe. It's not safe to be on a bike through there. And these are all, if we, if we're, if we're serious about looking at Charlottesville as a 21st century city...
That road's got to be better.
That road's got to be better. We, we could put in 400, 300 and something additional trees to what we've got. Now, we talk about how we want to not, we want to use trees as a way to avoid heat islands. To, there's a correlation between the, the temperature in the, in the area and the heat island effect and health and poor, you know, low, low-income people and so on. This is an area, the people who are in the area, for the most part, are lower income. It's an area that is a definite heat island. It's an area that needs that kind of attention. So every environmental box that we want to check is checked on this. Plus, it gets people where they want to go faster, more safely. This is, VDOT has a study of basically every, every street in, in the state. And we're in the .1 percentile for need. We're absolutely the top.
Uh huh.
And this needs to be addressed. And for us to say, "We don't have the money right now," at a time when we're also going to be spending, you know, $150 million on various other projects over the next five years...
You think it's short-sighted.
It's short-sighted. It's a false economy.
So let's, you know, just wrap this up here. So, you're uncertain if now's the right time to allocate the money to the parking garage on, on market. And you outline your reasons why. But you are certain that we need to move forward with the West Main streetscape project and you outline your reasons why.
And the main reason why is, I think this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity.
Okay, why do you say that?
Because we've got $20 million on the table from the state and the university.
Okay.
That money, if we say, "No, we're not going to do it now, we're going to turn back the money to the state."
Okay, so we lose 40% of what the project costs?
No guarantee we ever get it back.
Okay, okay.
No guarantee, it's certainly not ever going to get cheaper. And here's the problem. We've got utilities under the road there...
Right.
That are beyond their useful life. We've got water lines, gas lines, things like that, that need attention. They don't need it this year, but they are going to need it in the next five. You're just looking, you know, it's things that are 50, 70 years old.
How do you look at, and I'm mindful of your time here. If we could go maybe 10 more minutes, could we do that?
Sure.
How do you look at, how do you look at, and I asked you this the last time you came on, how do you look at the rest of your term? You've got two spots left coming up for grabs. And you've got some critically important decisions on the horizon. We're not sure if Chip is going to be city manager long-term. Perhaps he is, perhaps he's not. You've got the Market Street Garage, the West Main streetscape, you've got School Read, you've got a lot of stuff here. How do you look at the rest of your term coming out of COVID?
Well, coming out of COVID, the first thing that I think we have to do, and it's, it's not going to sit well with some of my more liberal friends, but the first thing we need to do is to secure the economy. That if we don't get the economy back on track...
And what does that mean?
Tourism.
Okay.
Number one.
Okay.
Restaurants as part of the tourist trade, but also just, that's the way Charlottesville rolls.
Sure.
You know, we like our restaurants. We want to be able to spend the money there. And that puts money in the pocket of people, waitstaff and cookstaff, who are not doctors and lawyers.
That's right.
And so when we talk about trying to revive the economy, it's really not for the benefit of the doctors and lawyers who have been doing just fine during this time anyway. It's for the benefit of the people whose jobs have been cut or eliminated or cut way back on. The people who can't figure out how they can go, you know, take a job being, you know, waiting tables during the day because their kid is at home because we've got virtual school.
Sure.
So there are all, I think that the next six months, eight months, 10 months, as we make what I'm hoping is going to be a transition to a post-COVID economy, it's not going to flip a switch. It's going to take some time. It's going to take some attention. We've got over a million dollars in an economic development fund that's available to be spent. And I want to say to Chris Engel and to the city manager and others, "How are we going to take that money and use it now to try to jumpstart the Charlottesville economy?"
How are your peers responding to that?
Well, we haven't...
On council?
We haven't really, I think, I've had the discussion individually with some of them. Some of them are sort of, hmm, that's an interesting question.
The temperature, I guess, the reader, the viewer, the common man, the common woman, us, is getting, is that perhaps is not a priority for everybody.
It's not.
Yeah.
And so the...
And then we look at what's happening downtown. We walk constantly. He spends so much time down here, me too, it's empty. I mean, the vacancy rate, normally the vacancy rate in a healthy economy in Charlottesville downtown, the vacancy rate's like pretty darn close to zero.
Right, 1%, 2%.
Yeah. Now it's like 20, 25%, which is terrifying.
It is. And it's, it's particularly terrifying to folks who own property down here.
Yeah.
But, but it should be terrifying to all of us.
Right.
Because if you, if you look at, I mean, the one thing we don't know about the current budget, we don't know what B-Pole taxes are going to look like. We have a decent idea of what property taxes are going to be and, and how, what the collections rates are going to be. We don't really know, because the B-Pole taxes, tax returns aren't even due for another few weeks yet.
Right.
The city doesn't know whether that's going to be...
I would imagine they're substantially lower.
Imagine. We've budgeted for about a $1.5 million hit. Is that going to be a realistic number? Is that number going to carry forward into the next fiscal year? We've had to make some just pure wild guesses about what that's going to look like. And we hope that they're accurate, but who knows? And let's face it, if we, if we're off by $1.5 million, that's, that's a lot of change.
My fear, and we've talked about this on the show, and this gets really deep and it's a lot to unpack, my fear is if we don't prioritize the jobs that come from tourism and from restaurants and the F and B sector like you brought up, then the only thing that's going to happen from that is, is it's going to just become a wealthier and more upper-class community. Because I, our friends are in this industry. They're offering the few employment opportunities for folks that, you know, may not be upper-class from a financial standpoint. Is that, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
So, so, so that has to be a priority if we're going to try to have the mission of creating like the, the equity and bridging this gap we've been talking about for so long. And I feel like a lot of people have been talking about... And I feel like a lot of people have been talking about that. Um, throw this question to you. Have you felt more compelled to be more transparent with some of your ideas because you have been? Um, whether it's writing on Facebook, whether it's doing interviews like this, have you felt more compelled to do that now because you want to offer maybe clarity of thought from a leadership standpoint?
To a certain extent. Uh, I will say this. Um, I've been frustrated by the discussions that we haven't been having on council.
What's that mean?
Things we haven't been talking about. I have been frustrated by the fact that, uh, until just, uh, you know, the last few weeks or so, that we've been getting more information about the capital budget, that we haven't been getting, that we haven't been having any kind of discussion about the West Main Streetscape. Uh, we've been seeing, I've been seeing that certain counselors, you know, I, I've gone back and forth in my own mind, I think if you'd asked me three weeks ago, I would have said, no, gee, we can't possibly spend that kind of money. And then more I started to look at it and in particular, I will say this, I look back at all of the public engagement that was done in 19, in 2014, 2015, 2016. There were hundreds of people who came out and participated in workshops and, and design efforts and so on. And the resulting project is a good project. It, uh, but one of the things that has happened as we've had so much turnover is there is nobody on council right now who had any part of that decision-making. The vote on it was cast in 2016. When Kathy Galvin left council, that was the end of the historical connection to that vote. Uh, we don't have anybody in the city manager's office and the deputy, there are no deputy city managers at the moment.
So what do we do about this?
Well, that's, that's why we told Chip Boils, your first job is to go hire people and to fill those desks. And then we, once we get the right people on the ship, as he, he likes to say, let's get the right people on the ship, then we'll figure out where to put them. Uh, and I think Chip has been a, a city manager before.
Yes.
And, uh, knows city government and how to be a city manager. I think he will be an excellent choice for all of that. And I, I have a great deal of confidence that we're going to get, get better about that. But, but that doesn't solve the institutional memory problem. It doesn't solve the problem that there is nobody who, who feels that this is my project to carry forward.
Sure.
As Kathy clearly did. Uh, and so it, the project has suffered because it takes so darn long to, once you file the Streetscape application, maybe five or six years before things actually get built. And in the real world, five or six years means you've had a complete turnover of, of everybody. And so we have to show to ourselves, as well as to the citizenry and to, to the state and everybody else, we have to show that we've got the ability to stick with something beyond the next election.
What, last question here, um, and thank you for the time. Last question here. What do you think is the, um, what do you think are the current optics for leadership? And how do we change those optics? Because I get all the time, and I know you do too, people constantly saying like, what's going on? How do we change the what's going on narrative?
Well, I hope that one of the things, you know, I was just beginning to think that maybe we were going to be able to get down to governing.
And then Super Bowl, Super Bowl Sunday.
And then this, this whole thing blows up.
Yeah.
Um, I hope we will be able to, one way or another, move beyond it to, to get to this kind of very difficult, I mean, when we're talking about millions of dollars, the future of the city, the future of the city economy.
You're talking about real stuff.
We're talking about real stuff.
Yeah. But, but the other stuff, the pop and circumstance, if you call it the pop and circumstance, whatever you want to call Super Bowl Sunday was, the collateral damage of that is the word trust.
Right.
That's the problem is the trust word.
Right. And I.
And that's only human.
And I, I completely get that. Uh, and I, I'm not, you know, I, I'm not going to get back in.
Right.
Through the back door into, into that discussion. But ultimately, I, I think that council will, will need to earn the trust of the people and they will need to earn it by doing and not by fussing. And once we start doing, things will look better.
Thank you. I would like to see that too. I know you want to see that. Thank you for your time, sir.
Sure.
I appreciate it. Lloyd Snook, thank you. Um, JDubs, Lloyd Snook right there. Um, thank you, sir. If we could see him out and Keith Smith will join us in a matter of moments. Thank you, Lloyd. Um, we appreciate his time on the program. We have Keith Smith about four minutes away. A lot we're going to cover this week on the show. We want to dot the i's and cross the t's from the telethon. We raised over $70,000. We're going to certainly highlight that. I want to offer a little perspective myself on this topic. Here's the perspective I'm going to offer. This topic with the credit cards really went viral, snowballed and consumed the news cycle. In Sunday's Daily Progress, there was an above the fold story about it with a jump into the A section of the newspaper. On Monday's show, so a week ago today, last Monday, we predicted on this show that there would be a cover page story above the fold in the Sunday edition of the newspaper on the credit card topic. Because that's the most, uh, read edition of the newspaper because of the, the coupon inserts. Now where do we go from here? I've talked about this with a lot of folks, including an important conversation I had this morning with someone's, um, with, with someone whose opinion I, I really consider The mayor is not going to be charged or prosecuted with this. She is, she will not be charged or prosecuted with this. There must be a massive revamp of the credit card policy. I would expect that to happen. A massive revamp of the credit card policy. From there, that revamp should clearly outline expectations for use of taxpayer dollars through credit cards issued by City Hall. Right now, in very shocking fashion, that credit card policy is ambiguous and poorly written. Furthermore, there were so many people that were associated with the paper trail of this negligent credit card usage that if a charge in a case was brought against the mayor, there would be collateral damage of other people inside City Hall catching heat, catching fire, and also culpable and accountable for this. Because there's a paper trail. This has been going on for a long time. So the mindset, Councilor Snook said this on the show, is look forward now and hope that we've learned from this and that the policy changes. It's on the agenda for tomorrow, Tuesday's council meeting. And perhaps that's something that comes up that you need a massive revamp. Regardless, regardless, I'm going to do this. I'm going to read one paragraph from Sunday's edition of the Daily Progress when they talked about this story and then I'm going to get to Keith Smith and then I'm going to put this behind, behind me unless this comes up again with something she does. Regardless, this is the first paragraph of the story I want to read from the newspaper. Sunday's edition of the Daily Progress. This has now been picked up, this story, by all of the Lee Enterprise newspapers. So what that means is, the story that was in Sunday's edition of the Daily Progress is now being syndicated across all of Lee Enterprise newspapers, which is, for example, the Roanoke Times, um, the News at Advance in Lynchburg, I think the Richmond Times is a Lee Enterprise paper as well. I'll close this topic by just reading the first paragraph of the story. Charlottesville Mayor Nikia Walker said on Facebook Live last weekend that she is under investigation by the city after she used her city-issued credit card to pay for gift cards to compensate people who spoke at city council meetings. That's all I'm going to read, that's a fact, that's all was said. She said on Facebook Live that she used her city-issued credit card to pay people to speak at city council meetings. I'll leave it there. I think we need to always be mindful of trust. And I think we need to be mindful of trust even from my side of the table, from a guy that has a microphone and whose website, I Love Seaville, had over a quarter million people land on the website or its network. And I want to be mindful, and I'll be committed to you, um, about relaying facts more. I'll relay facts more to you. And when it's a topic like this that could be potentially more explosive, in the future, I will stick more to facts. And if I stick more to facts, you can't argue with facts, that will help from a trust standpoint. I think if we're transparent. Transparency is going to breed trust and accountability. And now more than ever in Charlottesville, now more than ever, we need that trust to come back to City Hall. And how that trust is going to come back to government in our town is through action. It's through proof of performance, is through saying, I'm going to make this my goal and I'm going to follow through and make it a reality. And I've said on this program, and I'll say it again, the election on November 3rd is the most important election perhaps in the history of the town because of so many things riding on it. You have a municipality that is struggling to come out of COVID. You have a municipality in Charlottesville, the jobs that are being stripped away from the community the most are the jobs that were coming in from a, 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 a lower pay scale standpoint. The jobs that are still strong, paying well and going strong are the ones that are middle and upper scales, upper pay scale standpoint in Charlottesville. So COVID, if ever anything is happening, COVID has taken away jobs in hospitality and food and beverage. COVID has taken away a lot of the jobs that created diversity in the community. COVID has taken away the jobs that created, um, diversity from a wealth spectrum in the community. If anything, what COVID is doing to Charlottesville is COVID is making the community more, more rich, more unaffordable, more unattainable, less approachable, more, um, uniformed from its look standpoint. And I found it refreshing in the interview with Councilor Snook that he was going to prioritize, despite catching flak from his Democratic colleagues, he was going to prioritize the revitalization of the local economy. Because if you're going to want the, if you want Charlottesville to be diverse, well better get the restaurants and the food and beverage and the breweries and the wineries going again. If you don't get those restaurants, those wineries and the breweries going again, you're going to have a community that is white and rich. And that white and rich community, that's only going to have more momentum driven behind those elements. Have you walked up and down the mall recently? Have you walked from the Pavilion to the Omni? I do it a few times a day. You should. Look at the, the vacancies there. Walk from the Pavilion to the Omni and check the vacancies. A healthy economy, the Charlottesville vacancy rate for its downtown mall is literally less than 1%, less than 1%. You look now, you're probably looking at 25, 30%. The interesting thing people say is, 25 to 30%, that's only hurting the landlords. Folks, the, the people that own the buildings on the mall, yes, they don't want their building open, but the, the, the Charlie Lewis's of the world, the Joe Geeks of the world, the Ludwig Kootner's of the world, the, the, the Alan Kajin's of the world, the Bill Nichmans of the world, the, uh, the, uh, Joffrey Woodruff's of the world, their units, their buildings staying empty for, for six months, eight months, 12 months sting a little bit, but that's, that's a drop in the cup. It's a drop in the cup. The vacancies on those mall, on that mall, who it's really hurting is the people who are being employed by the jobs that were otherwise in those storefronts. Those jobs are gone. Think about it this way. You're bartending on the mall, whether you're bartending at the Whiskey Jar, you're bartending at Rapture. Say you're Al, you're Al Zappa, you're bartending at Rapture. Al Zappa is an icon in downtown Charlottesville. I don't know many people besides Al Zappa that wear shorts in 20-degree weather. Al is one of a kind and he's one of a kind because he's worked at the Rapture, uh, he's worked at Rapture as a bartender for so long. Al, while working at Rapture, this guy, well-known, good at his job, receptive to, uh, customers, on top of what customers wanted to drink. He made a good living as the lead bartender at Rapture Restaurant, one of the most popular spots on the downtown mall. Since COVID has hit, that job's not what it was or even a reality anymore. It's just not. The jobs that were, where, where you can make a couple hundred bucks, um, at the Whiskey Jar, working a Friday or Saturday night, cash that day and leave. 150, 200 bucks at Jack Brown's or more on a Friday or Saturday night, those jobs are gone. They are not here right now. I guess I'll close with this and then I'll get out of here. If we're going to rebound, if we're going to rebound from COVID, and if we're going to rebound from COVID and be a better version of Charlottesville, and a better version of Charlottesville is, uh, is a more diverse Charlottesville, a better version of Charlottesville is a healthy economy Charlottesville, a better version of Charlottesville is a Charlottesville where people can afford to live in. That's why I was so proud of our efforts on the telethon. We'll talk about those efforts tomorrow at Real Talk, 10:15 with Keith Smith. Um, and we'll announce the final total that we raised. More monies come since the telethon on Friday. But if we're going to be the best version of ourself, it's going to have to start with the five folks on the dais. And those five folks on the dais are going to have to rebuild the trust that was lost over the course of however long. Because no matter who you talk to and what you agree upon, we can all agree upon this. Some of the leadership we're seeing is not stable. And because it's not stable, we have uncertainty in many elements of our Charlottesville community. That uncertainty could be the economy, that uncertainty could be trust, that uncertainty could be communication, that uncertainty could be policy, votes and decision-making, housing policy and housing votes, a garage, a school reconfiguration, a West Main Streetscape. It's called optics. It's called optics. We've got to rebuild the trust. When we rebuild the trust, the citizens will follow. The trust is one of the first elements. You rebuild the trust, then you can communicate. When you communicate, you can outline a plan. When you outline a plan, you set clear expectations. When you set clear expectations, you do whatever you can to meet that plan and the expectations and the goal. And when you do that, you have a pop, a proof of performance. And when you have a proof of performance, you have something you can leverage. And when you have a pop, something you can leverage, a proof of performance, you're able to take that pop and what you can leverage and you can say, look, I've already done it. Trust me, I can do it again. We need a proof of performance, that five people can come together and lead. Not bicker, but they need a proof of performance that they can do something they say, carry it through to the end and have a completed project where we as citizens can say, they did exactly what they were talking about. Now let's follow their lead onto the next thing. That's the show. My name is Jerry Miller. Judah Wickauer is the director. This is the I Love Seaville Show. Tomorrow at 10:15 AM on Real Talk, we will announce the grand total, um, that we've raised from the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Telethon. This is north of $70,000. On Friday during the telethon, we raised $98.08 per minute. $70,615 over 12 hours. More has come in. We'll give you that total tomorrow. The community came together during the telethon to crowdsource a piece of property for the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust. It was, it was awesome. It was awesome. You guys have a good one. Thank you for joining us today.[1785.41] it was awesome. It was awesome. You guys have a good one. Thank you for joining us today.